Henry, would you mind just sending that panelist request again if you're able to to Gene? He's on, he just can't. Yeah, he didn't have it pop up.
I just sent it again, but if there's any more issues, please let me know.
Okay, thanks.
Henry, I have a hunch that you sent it to me because I got that. I got something unfamiliar asking me to be a panelist.
Yeah, that's sort of that's sort of how we get people into the discussion area, but but here you are. I think we have everyone now. I do want to note that I see. Jim Zissin from the from the select board and Lee and Will. From from the from the media. And I just want to say, if you have any questions during our discussion, please raise your hand. I'd like to be able to answer them if we can. I'm going to record this meeting and. We can get started. Alright, so I'll call the meeting to order at 1:05 PM. And the first item on our agenda, just to get through is public comment, and I don't know if anybody has any public comment. Jim or Lee or Will, please raise your hand. Okay, great. So we're moving on to our first agenda item, which is the general contractor bid discussion and approval.
Henry, I have a presentation. It's just short. It's what I sent out via email as well. If you'd like me, I can I can.
Yeah, I actually was. I was about to suggest.
Sounds good.
Please go ahead.
Absolutely. Okay, can you all see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, let me put it in. Okay, so this is the schedule you're familiar with. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but we are here. Today to talk about the general contractor bids that were received. So last two Fridays ago, we received the filed sub bits. And and we and then last Friday, we received the general bits. So. I would, you know, suggest maybe opening up for discussion here. I have a few more slides just to show. Mandatory requirements. We did go through and check those. All of the contractors that were submitted were prequalified. They all acknowledged all the addenda. They signed their. Bid forms, and this was all submitted on bid docs. I had also. In the bid form, it shows the files of bidders that they've included. In their bid, and you can see they're all the same. They've all included Cape Way for roofing. Robert Irvine for plumbing, Iomonte for HVAC and Systems for electrical. So these are all. Corresponded with the numbers that we received for the filed sub bits. And so now the general bits have taken them into their bits and. Let's see. Okay, so I've also separated out, you know, the alternate pricing. So. The bid for the general contractor or the budget for the general contractor that is included in the. Budget is just over 11 million, so the low bidder is at 8.9, and so total under budget is a little over 2.1 million. So. That's great news. We got great bid coverage with six bidders bidding this. And I also have a few slides on the whoops. A few slides. This was information received by Garland. And yeah, I can, you know, this this was it for the presentation. So I'm happy to, you know, go back to any. Information that's needed. I think I am frozen right now. Can you all still hear me, though?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great.
We can hear you. You're not moving, but the screen is moving.
So sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And the screen is moving. Okay, so I'll just land here and. I turn it back over to you, Henry.
Sure. I mean, so I think really the the we are. Taking the low bidder, right, Mike? That's. What we're required to do by the law. And.
Yeah, by law, we have to take a low bid.
Yep.
And. These are all prequalified.
Yep.
I think the question was was if if the alternate came in less than the. Primary bid, there was going to be a discussion about do we go with the alternate? And I'm not sure how much of a discussion we're going to have about that because it's it's clear that it did not come in under.
But there was a table that Lena flashed on the screen. I certainly couldn't absorb what it was. And if she shared that by email, by the way, Lena, I didn't get that email. Can you summarize for us what this tells you?
Sure, I would ask. So this information RDA received from Garland, I believe, and. Gene, if if you want to speak to this or Molly. They sent this to me to put into the presentation. So you're correct, it was not sent out before this meeting. But this was a summary table that was sent by Garland.
So hi, everybody. It's Gene Raymond. We did. We did receive this from Garland unsolicited. And I don't have. I don't have any problem showing it to you, and I don't have any reason to doubt it. But when we looked at the bid results. It's clear it's 2.1 million under if you stay with the PVC. Which in this table would be 123, the fourth chart over from the left says Johns Manville PVC. That's the base bid, and there's some various technical statistics with it. And then I was curious if the alternate was accepted. Would you still be at or below budget? And I think by my calculations, even if you accept the liquid applied alternate, you're still 50,000 under the budget. So then the question is, is there anything about the liquid applied? That would lead someone to say, yes, it's worth a couple million dollars. And so, again. This came from the liquid applied manufacturer. And anything in in the second column from the left, which is highlighted in green, they see as an advantage over PVC. So. The first one, it is tear. Well, now I can't see it.
We lost when we lost Lena, yeah.
But, you know, in in their opinion, and again, I don't have any reason to doubt their. Their technical statistics, maybe while, oh, maybe Lena will come back up. They they say that it has a stronger. It's a stronger membrane with more resistance to tearing. It's a thicker membrane and more flexible even under low temperatures than PVC. It's a a s- a single membrane as opposed to PVC, which is a series of sheets which are then welded together. Where they come together. And, oh. Our bid documents are set up so that the roof has to be done before school starts. So, you know, in a what if situation where weather or some other event causes. The construction to be delayed into the school year or the finishing up in the school year. You know, Garland would point out that their system doesn't have mechanical fastening and it would be. Wouldn't have any noise, and it wouldn't have any odor if there were students or staff inside the building. So that's kind of a high level summary. It sounds like there's some rose. But whether it's worth $2 million is above our pay grade.
Yes, Karema.
Yeah, so. Actually.
Oh, you're muted. I'm sorry.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The first one is when we're looking at the alternate, well, actually. High level, when we say our budget, I'm assuming it's just the construction costs and we have. Additional budget for our own contingencies, or is that like our toll when we say when we're comparing what our budget is? Is that everything when we're talking about where we're below and above?
We're we're talking about the construction line. The rest of the budget remains intact for this discussion today. So yeah, this is under. And construction line costs.
Just construction. Okay, so and when we look at, so like, for instance, I know we're not sharing the screen, but like Kban. And their alternate. Was the 1.8, but if we accept an alternate from, say. And this is why I need an explanation, like Corolla. Was at 2.3, but their alternates are negative 80,000. Then they're less if we go with the alternate than Cape. Cape Way. I guess I'm trying to figure that. Piece out unless this was wrong in this sheet that I was sent and I'm and I might be looking at the wrong thing.
I can elaborate on it, Karema, if you'd like.
Okay, so I'm trying to like figure that out. Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yes, so you're referring to the filed sub bits that and I'm sorry that I crashed in the middle of the meeting. It's like the worst nightmare. So you're referring to the filed sub bits that were received two Fridays ago. And so we did receive the filed sub bits from the contractors, including the roofers who included their. Deduct their either add or deduct pricing. And then seven days later, we we received the general bids, and so the general bidders. That are up on this screen, they can choose who they include for files. So, yeah, and then Corolla, and then there was. One more. I can't. I think it was. I can't remember the name of the other roofer, but they actually.
Three of them have negative alternates. It's Corolla, Triumph and Gibson, which I'm confused why we have three bidders who are doing a negative and then two are positive.
I know, and we can't. So and we can't do any real outreach.
Can't look into it.
Yeah, because it's public bidding. So I haven't, you know, I haven't done any outreach since we've received any bids or during the bid time. Every conversation. Has to be written in email and then an addendum issued. So I know it is confusing on why some were ads and some were deducts, but. I guess we really, you know, we really won't know.
It's just a huge swing.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, like, you go with one guy, you're gonna. It's like a swing of a couple million. So. Anyways, I it's just hard to figure that piece out. Okay.
Understood, yeah.
I guess there's nothing we can do.
I know there isn't. I mean, you know, it's it also all of these bidders here did include Cape Way in their pricing. So they chose to take Cape Way. And so that's why the ad.
Yeah, because they're going with the base and they're not worrying about the ad alternate. I mean, so it kind of puts us in this dilemma where if we wanted to, we can't even pick what would be the most cost effective for us. But, okay, now, I mean, I'm not used to the public as much.
I know. It's different, yeah.
It was a little frustrating when I saw that piece coming because it's hard to get the explanation, but.
Sure, yeah.
I think this.
I guess it is what it is.
It's sort of enlightens. I mean, I'm going to get into an opinion here. I'm going to flat out acknowledge this is an opinion, but. You know, we sort of have said before that let's let the market speak via the bidding process and. What we meant by that was let's see what the delta in cost is. I think we learned something a little more when the market spoke, but it requires interpretation. My interpretation of it is. Certain roofers are much more comfortable with the liquid applied coating than a traditional re-roofing job. So. I I don't mean that to spin in either direction, but when we see dramatically, some people think it's a deduct, some people think it's a significant add. That's the market saying something back to us that at least some of these roofers. Are not as comfortable with that option. Again, that's all opinion, but since we can't quiz them and we can't say, hey, why? Why did you have it this and that way? To me, it just can't be as simple as they're getting the material at a higher cost than their competition. I think. I think they're pricing it differently because they see it as a different job with different liabilities.
So and this is just to educate myself. So say as a group, we felt really. Compelled to do the alternate. Could we have the GCs resubmit their numbers to us? With the add alternate as part of included as the base to see if those numbers are revised?
The the short answer is no.
Okay, all right. So we're we're kind of in this situation that.
Yeah, we we cannot control who they carry, who they choose to carry.
No, not who they carry, but like that we that we say that our base incorporates the alternate one. As as part of like the. Accepted base, and maybe they would. I don't know, maybe not. Maybe that's.
Fortunately, it's a hard line for the procurement law about negotiating after the bid unless you change something in your bid.
Yeah, I just think we're, yeah, at a hard spot now. So it's kind of hard to go with the add alternate when we're going to end up really paying more than if we had gone. And had incorporated the first time.
Yeah, there's a lot of behind the stuff, behind the scenes stuff that happens with these bids I I've learned in being involved in in town government and. It's not as pure and honest as you would want it to be. It's it's nothing like the private sector, and that's why, you know. State infrastructure is falling apart. It's because of this bid process. We're stuck with it.
If I could just interject one thing. So first observation is that we actually only got three bids for the roofing. There were five bids that were submitted, but two of the bids that were submitted, one by Triumph and the other one by Corolla. Were submitted by nonqualified firms, therefore we could not accept their bids. So there were only three roofing bids that were submitted. So forget Triumph and Corolla because they were not prequalified. And since this job has an estimated cost in excess of $10 million, we're required by state law to prequalify the sub bidders and the general contractors at the time prior to bid. So you're only looking at three bids. So in this particular instance, as everyone said, the expectation was that the liquid applied coating was going to be. I believe I can fairly say materially less expensive than the than the recover. And two of the general con or two of the the. Roofing subcontractors did not view the job that way and Cape Way. And Greenwood submitted substantially higher prices for the ad. For the alternate, whereas Gibson Roofing Roofing was the only of the three that submitted a discount. And they offered a deduct of $157,000, which is less than 5% of the value of the base bid. And I believe at the time, prior in the previous discussions, the expectation was that the liquid applied coating was going to generate savings of. Hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. The number between 500,000 and a million dollars was at least thrown around in some informal discussions. The other thing I would say is that this is the. There are two ways you can bid. This kind of work in the public sector, you can go with a construction manager at risk CMR, chapter 149A, which was introduced in the Construction Reform Act of 2004, I think it was. Or the traditional design bid build, chapter 149. So when you're doing this as a chapter 149 design bid build job, the general contractors are in a bit of a bind because they have to pick a single contract subcontractor for every trade. So they can't mix and match with the alternate. So all of them carried Cape Way. Under the reasonable assumption as a bidding strategy, I would suggest that the base bid with Cape Way was the lowest price that the owner was going to see. We could certainly, if we wish. You know, they could have maybe made a calculated risk and said, okay, I'm thinking they're going to want to take the alternate, so I'm going to carry Gibson because Gibson was the. The low with the alternate, but. None of the bidders chose that option. None of the general contractors chose that option. So this is a somewhat difficult situation. And 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 even, you know, it does present some challenges. Obviously, it's more difficult to do bidding in the in the public sector, but. But having said that, this is not a particularly good tool for using alternates and alternates in public bidding are somewhat complicated by design. And generally, if you're doing something simple like. Torazzo flooring or a solar array up on a roof. And it's more like an add than an alternate, this kind of process can work reasonably well. However, when you're basically proposing a completely different technology, a completely different approach. For one of the two essential elements of the bids, the other being HVAC, then you can run into these kinds of challenging situations.
Thanks, Ralph. I guess the the question is, does anybody see the value in adding? $2 million to this project? To use the liquid applied roof?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, I'm.
No.
Yeah.
No.
The the move this. The move here would be to. Do the PVC membrane. And then come up with a, you know, obsolescence schedule so that at a certain point, before it gets to the point where it's leaking and insulation is compromised. At that point, you do the liquid applied and we put that to bid. What, you know, 15, 18 years from now before we have problems if this is maintained properly. So that we can extend this roof a lot longer, and at that time it will cost less than a full replacement because we won't be doing. All of the additional work, especially if the HVAC equipment is properly maintained and that will come into play with the with the liquid applied. Product at that time.
I would thank you for saying that, Mark. I was gonna say exactly the same thing. I think in the in the long in the long haul, that's the way to go. I think if we get a 20 year warranty on this roof, we start talking about liquid applied in year 15, 16. Is is probably the best case scenario. I appreciate you bringing that up.
I think another thing to consider, too, is at that time, when you guys reached that point, you can reach out directly to the liquid applied. Manufacturers and start getting support. As a town from them to help, you know, start looking and doing reporting on the roof as it exists at that point. Start doing some preparatory repairs if needed.
I have a couple of comments. One is to thank Ralph. For the analysis he gave us midweek by email. That was really helpful. Another is, gosh, we gotta be celebrating a bit that the numbers are lower than expected. That's wonderful. Sort of puts us in a position where the choice, I think, is very obvious. You got to look at the gap between the membrane and liquid applied. Though and say, you know, we must have done something wrong. Because I don't believe the the market costs, market price of that product. Really is a significant premium over the membrane. But I think it's too late to explore that or remedy that. I think. But it makes sense to. At least be aware we might have whiffed somehow. And then the comment about getting back up on that roof in 15, 16 years. Geez, I would hope we get 25 or 30 out of it. You know, in the private sector. Our roofs last. And the roof has to be careful and who knows what's wrong with the roof we bought 20 some odd years ago. But it should not should not have gone bad five years ago. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
I agree with you there. I just think that the way that this town has a history of not maintaining its buildings. I don't think we're going to get maximum lifespan out of out of anything. Maybe 15, 16 years is too soon, but it would have to be an ongoing. You know, by, you know, a couple of times a year, get up there and really do an assessment. Even if it's just a high level, one of us getting up there and looking at it without consultants or. You know, just just a first look to see if this thing looks like it has visible signs of failure or if it doesn't.
I I think, if I can speak, I I think a lot of the leaking we saw with this roof was in the seams area. So when we first start seeing seams becoming poor. You know, ripping apart or or deteriorating, that's when we really need to move on on doing something, whether it's, you know, reseaming it or I don't even know if that's possible. We're doing a liquid applied, but I think the seams are going to tell us when this thing is about to fail. But when we're getting close to that point, I think what happened is we waited too long this time and the insulation got wet. And there were other problems that precipitated us having to to cut into the existing roof without just doing a ceiling a sealant over it. It's my thought. I don't know.
Also have like annual maintenance plan, you know, where a professional roofer goes up there every year. After you get the new membrane on.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, just to say, like, I I know we're talking about, but we're talking post install. Like, I do think that the the key is starting to. Do QA QC when they are installing and looking at how it's going. And like, I don't know if that falls under RDA or who's going up there, but I think. Our key is making sure that while installation is going on, we are periodically getting up there and doing our checks. Making sure that everything's being installed according to the specs, because I do think the drawings had a lot of good detail about penetrations and. The seeming, you know, like making sure that what we show on the drawings is what is getting installed and so that we don't have. Issues failing because I think a lot of the probably the issues happen with how it was installed versus maybe the longevity of the product that we're putting on. So I just want to make sure that that's a huge priority and a focus during construction and, you know, I don't know these. These GCs, but staying on those observations and getting up there and, you know, doing our inspections and so forth.
Kareema, just as a partial response to that, RDA and Left Field. Will be doing long term stuff and we would welcome anyone. From this group. Obviously, the school Todd would know all about that, too. He'd be there, but. We can certainly have. Outside input as well, but I just wanted to assure you that, you know, that is part of our our scope and RDA's scope to monitor the construction progress.
Yeah, like like I said, that before we started the meeting, I would like to be involved in that, and I don't care if it's twice a week. I'm happy to get up there and make sure that everything's being done properly. Because. That that's what I know how to do.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark.
And could I just add just a couple of quick things? Thing number one is, one of the issues I think with our roof, I mean, obviously, it was done prior to. The requirements that owners, public owners have on owner's project manager, in this case, Left Field. So I suspect that the construct installation of that roof when it was done in 1999. Was probably not supervised with a great deal of care or as much scrutiny as it's going to receive today. The second observation I would make is that that TPO membrane was a relatively new technology in 1999. It's a much more established product now. And the last point I'd like to make, and this is kind of following up on Sam's point. While we can sit here and talk about the wisdom or the the results we got from basically bidding two fundamentally different alternates for the roofing. I think we should stop and just basically kind of like. Appreciate the fact that this was a very successful procurement. The HVAC system is by and large the most important part of the project. We got competitive bids from a number of. Highly qualified firms that do this type of installation. On school projects throughout the throughout the Commonwealth in Massachusetts and the HVAC subcontractors that we we got. And Left Field can speak to this as well is, you know, it's a they're a local. Contractor and a local subcontractor, and they do a lot of work on school projects and they're they're well regarded within the industry. And the other two trades, the electrical and the plumbing trades, which are much smaller in this particular procurement. Also went to experienced and qualified firms that do a lot of work in public schools. And by that, I mean. Do a lot of work on MSBA core school construction projects. So by and large, and we got bids from three subcontract, three roofing contractors. So I think we we should maybe just pause and acknowledge that this was a successful bid. And I think we're serving the interest of the of the town of Marblehead well. And I'm sure that the continued involvement of this subcommittee will will ensure that we have. A good outcome. I I would observe just anecdotally, the RDA was the designer of record for the Brown School. And amongst the architecture firms that I've I've worked with, I spent the first. 20 odd years of my my career in horizontal construction, which is engineer led. And then my experience engineering firms do a better job of construction phase services than architecture firms, no offense, but. RDA had amongst the best construction phase services of of an architect. That I've worked with in my 45 years in this business. So I think we're we're we've got a good outcome. We have a good team. I think we're poised for success.
Thanks, Ralph. I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask one question that I I think the public might be interested in, but. Before we sort of vote on our our decision, but. I was wondering why the. Why the the bids came in, you know, $2 million under budget? If someone could provide some insight into. You know, the discrepancy between our estimate and and where we ended up.
I can take a quick whack at that is across the board. Really, in the last number of months, we're seeing an incredibly competitive bidding market. And an incredibly competitive bidding market. Usually creates these scenarios where projects beat their estimates. For a number of years, it was the opposite, no matter how conservative. Estimators and we thought we were being the bids. Supply chain issues, everything we heard about post COVID, we're coming in higher. So. I think the market has plateaued and is probably correcting. We're seeing. Anything that's going out to bid in the last month or two. Bid very successfully publicly among the filed sub trades. So to me. It's the market's hungry and people want to work through what they perceive as instability. Ultimately.
Ultimately, if I had a time machine, I would have stood by the estimates that we put out there until we bid it. Because it's still highly questionable. It's still a volatile bidding time. But I'm not sure if it fully answers your question, but it's consistent with what we've been seeing on public sector bidding with medium and large, large size contractors for the last number of months, where most projects are coming in under at this moment. Might not be the case in six months or 10 months or two years, but right now is an ideal time to be bidding. Thanks.
If I could just add one point to that, most of the variation in the, in the, in the, the bids versus the estimate is in the roofing. So, I mean, there's some savings in the electrical scope. Again, the HVAC work, interestingly enough, is for the HVAC subcontractors, this is not all that dramatically different than installing HVAC equipment on a new school. But the roofing scope is fundamentally different than what a roofing contractor would do in a new, new project. And so, one, the roofing estimate's harder to generate because of the, the complexities of doing a recover versus a, a new install. And secondly, I think also that the team was probably reasonably conservative in providing an estimate for the roofing work. But the, the HVAC bid is below estimate, but it's relatively close and they're very tight bids. And I concur with everything that Brian Dakin said. Since, say, 2022, the market in the public sector that the, these projects operate in, the bid climate has improved dramatically and it's moving in the favor of the owners. When I first started following this project, I was deeply concerned that we were gonna have difficulty getting bid in for interest because it's not a, it's not as attractive a scope of work. Again, the HVAC is a bit different, but for the roofing and the electrical and the plumbing, they're not really glamorous, it's not a really glamorous product. But we got good prices for everybody. So, but the, 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 most of the variance is on the roof, the, not the other trades.
I would also just, the last sort of tidbit is that the estimators are not trying to estimate the low bid. They're trying to make sure that they're capturing, you know, maybe not the middle of the pack, but it's not uncommon. And they want to be higher, right? Because being lower is really, turns into a huge headache for a municipality or a town. So I think that's just something to consider as well, that there's a conservativeness applied to Brian and Ralph's points where they're not trying to represent what the lowest, most competitive bid is going to be.
Yes, as I used to say, we, we, the, the estimators want to be the third bidder. They don't want to hit the low bid. They want to be number three.
Right, yep.
Excellent. Yeah, I really appreciate that. I think a lot of people who are following this are like me and have no prior experience. So getting that information helps. So I think what we're doing is accepting the bid from Homer Construction. Is that correct? They're the low bid?
I think we'll be recommending to the full committee that they award a contract to Homer.
Okay, I would just, sorry to interrupt, but I would tag in the without accepting the alternate, just as a formality.
Right, yep.
Good, thank you. So the, I am gonna call for a motion in a second, but the process would be that we're gonna prove it here. I'm going to bring this to the school committee on Thursday evening and, and I'll, I'll sort of come back to that in a second. And then we're going to try to get select board approval. Hopefully before December 1st, I think, Mike, I saw that Dan had offered to call a quick remote meeting just to approve that. So Jim, hopefully you're available for that. So anyway, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, to recommend the bid from Homer Construction without the, the alternate to the school committee for approval.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And jot this down. I'll, I'll just go down the list and Mark?
Yes.
Yes, in favor. Okay, Brian?
Which, Brian, I'm in favor.
Yes, Brian's there. Yes, thank you. Sam?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kareema?
Yeah.
And Mike?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. So the motion passes seven to zero. And I will bring this to the school committee. So moving on to, in, you know, to the next agenda item, it was suggested in, at the school committee, the last school committee meeting, that having a member of this committee come to discuss this, to this, to bring this in front of the full school committee on Thursday evening would be good, something they wanted to see.
What, what time is that meeting?
It's at 6:00 PM, probably around 6:30 is when we would, you know, get around to that part of the meeting. There's, there's sort of stuff that happens before then.
I can stop by. I don't want to be the primary because I've got a planning board meeting at seven in a different building. But I'll, I can show up and if it happens early enough, I'll, I'll participate. And if not, I won't.
Okay, I, and also I, you, I could, you know, this could be attended remotely. So if you want to join this remotely from the building where your planning board meeting is, and that would make it easier. I will talk to Al about moving this up on the agenda to be sure that it fits into your schedule.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, certainly I'm not trying to keep anybody else from being a part of that. But if, if anybody wants to do it, that's fine. If they want my support, I'll show up. If, if not, that's fine too.
Is anybody else interested?
Henry, I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention, the agenda right now is, it's pretty quick. There's only two short things before the roof discussion. So yeah, I think the 6:30 timeframe is pretty accurate for start time, just if that's a, a factor for anyone else deciding.
Yeah, and John, if it looks like sort of the district updates and stuff are, are taking more time, we can ask Al to move up the agenda item and so.
Henry, if you, if you need more than one, I can, it looks like my calendar's free. I could potentially be there as well.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I think it's gonna be a pretty short presentation, but I think it's, it would be helpful to have. I mean, to be honest, it's nice to showcase the work of this committee because we certainly couldn't have done it without you. So, great, so I, I will, I'll send you some more information by email, just, you know, the time and date and the agenda and stuff. And, and there'll be a Zoom link in there too, if you decide you want to join remotely. Great, okay. Well, I, I'm, I guess I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
I had, I had one.
You got one more.
One thought. The, the sooner the selectmen can approve the contract, the better, because the schedule was predi, well, the schedule was predicated on getting the HVAC submittals as soon as possible and getting that equipment ordered. And I think we have enough time to do it, given December 1st, but it, you know, a few days now can, can help.
Yeah, I think that's good. Well, actually, Jim's got his hand raised, so I'm gonna ask him.
I just wanted to say, coordinate with Dan Fox and Kyle. I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say, coordinate with Dan Fox and Kyle. It's, it's not unusual. We call a quick meeting on short order to approve a contract. So as soon as you're ready, just coordinate and we'll, we'll deal with that. So.
All right, will do. Thanks, Jim. Okay, anymore, any, anything else before we adjourn?
I'd love to have the chance to re-ask a question. It's a teeny question from a month ago. And that is, why do we have moving cools in the scope?
Oh, there's a, there's, in the library, there's a lot of paper, books, et cetera, et cetera. And when we take the existing air conditioning offline, the humidity in there is gonna, gonna raise. So we wanted to keep the library de-humidified. The other, and I don't know, but I assume that there's gonna be administrators in the building. And so again, a lot of the HVAC equipment is gonna be removed. And there's gonna be a number of weeks during the humid part of the year where there's no cooling or de-humidification in the building. But we were concerned about the library and I, I honestly don't know if we ended up putting any in the, in the admin suite or not. We didn't want to get musty.
Do they end up being permanent?
No, no, they're temporary.
Oh.
Just, just to keep the humidity knocked down during the summer months.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, thanks, Sam. Okay, well, I will, I, okay, so we can, Mark, did you second that motion to adjourn?
I did. I could do it again.
I think once is good, but we can, we can just take a quick vote. Mark?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kareema?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
And I am in favor. A motion is passed, so we are adjourned at 1:44 PM. Thank you so much, everybody. I will be in touch. Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.